Please be seated. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Your Honor.
This is your this afternoon in case 628131, State versus Joseph Simperman. Mr. Simperman, you were charged in the 26th count with information with having unlawful interest in public contracts, and my understanding is that you wish to enter a change of plea from not guilty to guilty in this matter, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
You understand by entering a guilty plea, you're accepting the allegations and you're relieving the state of its burden of proof, is that clear?
Yes.
Also, you understand you will not be having a trial?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson from the State to outline for the court potential penalties that are involved in the agreement that led to this charging in this hearing today. I'm going to ask your attorney some questions, then I'll speak with you further. If you have questions for me at any time, please ask them, okay?
Thank you.
On behalf of the State, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Stephanie Anderson, Public Integrity Attorney from the Office of the Ohio Auditor of State. Your Honor, this matter has been fully pre-tried and full discovery has been made, and at this time, it's the State's understanding that the defendant, Joseph Simperman, will enter a plea of guilty to all 26 counts of the information, all being having an unlawful interest in a public contract, all of them are misdemeanors of the first degree, which are punishable by a potential term of incarceration and county jail of up to 180 days and a potential fine of up to $1,000. Additionally, with this plea, we have come to the agreement that the defendant will pay a $10,000 fine representing $1,000 on counts one through 10 of this indictment. And beyond what's been stated in open court on the record, no promises or threats have been made to induce the defendant to enter a change of plea on today's date. Your Honor, just for a brief recitation of facts, this case stems from a year-long investigation conducted by the Ohio Ethics Commission. On September 25th of 2013, the Ohio Ethics Commission determined that it would open an investigation into the matter stemming from allegations of his abuse of his official position as a city councilman in awarding contracts or voting contracts in favor of Parkworks-Land Studio, which is the company that his wife is the senior project manager for. These contracts initially began when Mr. Simperman was on the Board of Trustees for Parkworks back in 2002. Back in 2002 to 2004, he voted on contracts that were awarded by, from the city of Cleveland, to Parkworks while he was a trustee. When his relationship with Ms. Nora Romanoff began developing, he then stepped aside as a trustee for Parkworks. And once they got married in 2006 then, he continued to vote on the contracts that again benefited the entity. From the, from 2002 to 2016 roughly, 26 contracts were awarded to the entity totaling $4.8 million. The specific amount is $4,812,248 cents worth of public contracts that were awarded to Parkworks-Land Studio. The most substantial of these contracts were awarded for Kirk Plaza. The total between the two contracts for Kirk Plaza was $2,576,000. The low end of the contracts was $8,890, and the high end of a single contract was $1.359,000. Your Honor, so with that, the State of Ohio has entered into the go and negotiated with Mr. Simperman through Mr. Sennenberg prior to the filing of the information in this case. And at this time, it is the State's understanding that Mr. Simperman will plead guilty to all 26 of these counts.
Thank you. Mr. Sennberg, is that your understanding of the potential penalties and the nature of the allegations here?
Yes, Your Honor. With one exception, the contracts were not awarded to Parkworks or Land Studio. The allegations, and we do not contest them, were that Parkworks and Land Studio benefited from the votes in the legislation in the city council.
Thank you. And as far as the particular counts, all 26, none of them were merged for purposes of sentencing because they were all separate contracts and separate events?
Yes, sir.
Have you received all the discovery that you sought on behalf of your client?
I have, Your Honor.
And have you had a chance to talk with him about the evidence the State would offer against him if this matter went to trial, defenses he might have, and evidence that's favorable to him?
We have, Your Honor.
You feel that Mr. Simperman will be making a knowingly, intelligent, involuntary change of plea here?
I do, Your Honor.
And you've engaged in extensive discussions and worked out information then, as opposed to having indictment for felonies potentially?
Potentially, correct, Your Honor.
And you feel that there's a factual basis then for the 26 charges that have been brought?
I do.
Thank you.
Judge, would you like us to approach the podium?
Well, you don't have to. Okay, this way. Sorry, folks. Mr. Simperman, how old are you, sir?
I am 47 years old, Your Honor.
And you're a college graduate, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And attended, what, high school at St. Ignatius and went to John Carroll?
Yes.
Have you read all 26 counts of this information?
Yes.
Have you understood them?
Yes.
Is there any need for me to read them to you?
No, thank you.
As you're here today, are you under the influence of any illegal drugs or alcohol?
No.
Do you take any prescription medications, anything that would affect your thinking?
No.
Are you an American citizen?
Yes.
Are you currently on probation, parole, or post release control?
No.
Do you understand that through your counsel, an agreement has been worked out to have you charged by way of information and that there are 26 counts of having unlawful interest in a public contract by virtue of that negotiation?
Yes.
And have you been a part of that and talked with your attorney about it?
Yes.
Has Mr. Sennberg answered your questions?
Yes.
So you are not currently on probation, parole, or post release control, or any other type of supervision?
No.
Do you have any questions in general about the nature of this agreement that's been reached to the 26 counts of the information?
No.
Are you satisfied with the representation that you received from your attorney?
Yes.
Sir, do you understand that by entering a guilty plea here, that you are waiving or giving up certain constitutional rights?
Yes.
Can I talk to you about those rights? Mr. Simperman, do you understand that you have the right to trial by jury or to a judge in this case?
Yes.
Do you understand you're giving up that right by entering a plea and you will not have a trial?
Yes.
Do you understand that you have the right to an attorney, something you pay, or if you can't afford one, that the court will appoint an attorney to represent you at no cost to you?
Yes.
Do you understand that you have the right to summon or subpoena witnesses to appear at trial and testify on your behalf under oath?
Yes.
Do you understand that you have the right to confront and cross-examine witnesses at trial through your attorney?
Yes.
Sir, do you further understand that you have the right to require the State to prove your guilt by evidence beyond a reasonable doubt on each count?
Yes.
Finally, do you understand that you have the right to remain silent and not testify, and no one can comment on the fact that you did not testify at trial?
Yes.
Do you understand you don't have any burden of proof, it's all upon the State, but if you plead guilty, as has been anticipated, you're giving up that right and you're accepting the allegations and you're relieving the state of its burden of proof, is that clear?
Yes.
Now, we've talked about the fact that there are 26 separate charges here of having an unlawful interest in a public contract, and you're aware that they span the timeframe from 2002 to 2012, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have read each of these charges, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's your feeling that you don't need me to explain them any further?
No, thank you.
So, in this matter, do you understand that each of these charges is a misdemeanor of the first degree? Each carries the potential of local incarceration up to six months and a fine up to $1,000, and that is on each of the particular counts, is that clear?
Yes.
Mr. Simperman, in terms of sentencing in this matter, the court could impose a sentence of jail time, you would have to serve it, the court can impose a fine, you would have to pay it, or I can impose a sentence suspended, place you on supervision for a period up to five years, is that clear?
Yes.
And there would be various conditions and obligations that you would have to meet during that supervision, is that understood?
Yes.
Do you have any questions so far?
No.
Have any threats or promises been made to you in order to induce you to enter into a plea here this afternoon?
No.
Knowing all this, and in count one, how do you plead to this charge of having an unlawful interest in a public contract and misdemeanor of the first degree?
Guilty.
Right. How do you plead to the same charge in count two?
Guilty.
In count three?
Guilty.
In count four?
Guilty.
In count five?
Guilty.
In count six?
Guilty.
In count seven?
Guilty.
In count eight?
Guilty.
In count nine?
Guilty.
In count 10?
Guilty.
In count 11?
Guilty.
In count 12?
Guilty.
In count 13?
Guilty.
In count 14?
Guilty.
In count 15?
Guilty.
In count 16?
Guilty.
In count 17?
Guilty.
In count 18?
Guilty.
In count 19?
Guilty.
In count 20?
Guilty.
In count 21?
Guilty.
In count 22?
Guilty.
In count 23?
Guilty.
In count 24?
Guilty.
In count 25?
Guilty.
In count 26?
Guilty.
Let the record reflect, the court finds defendant knowingly, voluntarily, and with a full understanding of his rights in his change of plea. Mr. Simperman, the court finds you guilty in count one through 26 inclusive of the charge of having unlawful interest in public contract misdemeanors of the first degree. Ms. Anderson, on behalf of the State, do you satisfy that the court has complied with criminal rule 11?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
And Mr. Sennberg, are you?
I am, Your Honor.
And it's your preference to waive the presense investigation, go directly to sentencing?
Thank you, Your Honor, you're right.
And I will say that I have received and reviewed the memorandum-
Thank you.
-supplied by the defense for sentencing, as well as the letters in that memo, as well as other letters that have come in. I believe we've had one at first, a letter that we considered at first, Mr. Simperman, but everyone else has been, expressed very favorable sentiments, so... Mr. Sennberg, what would you like to say on behalf of your client?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few words to say because this is the first time you're getting a look at this case and getting a look at Mr. Simperman, if I may, if the court would give me leave, I would like to talk a little bit about Joe. As you said, Judge, he graduated from St. Ignatius and John Carroll, grew up in the superior St. Clair neighborhood of Cleveland. After graduating from John Carroll, where he was a student body president, he decided to go into seminary for two years before making a decision that he would be more able to help people in the nonprofit sector. He ran for councilman judge, and for 18 years, Joe worked on almost every public project in the city of Cleveland. But perhaps more important than that is the thousands of lives he touched as a councilman judge. He has been identified as a visionary, he has been spoken about as being an advocate for those less fortunate in our society, the homeless, the people who couldn't take care of themselves, the underserved. He was a big proponent of raising money for public funds, and all of that, Judge, was part of his commitment at an early age to give a life of service, to give back to his community. And he's lived that, Judge, every day of his life since he made that commitment at an early age. And I know the court has received many letters from friends and from colleagues. I found it overwhelming to read about how many people he has touched, and I know that any one of us here would like to be spoken of so warmly. But Joe earned that, Judge, he earned the respect of the many people who wrote to the court through his deeds and through his service. And when you look at the words that are used over and over again to describe Joe, committed, energetic, ethical, selfless, the passion to move mountains, you can see that he's really made an impression upon this city. So we have to ask ourselves, how did Joe get in the position where he's finding himself being in front of a judge to sit in judgment at this point in time? And it goes back, Judge, in 2002, when Joe was a councilman for four years and active in the community, he was invited to join the Board of Trustees of Parkworks, which was a nonprofit that worked here in the city and collaborated with the city of Cleveland and with the private sector to improve public spaces throughout the city. And Joe, they only met four times a year, but during that time, the first 10 counts of this information addressed that he voted for 10 pieces of legislation that benefited Parkworks at the time. Now, Joe never got any financial benefit from his votes. Parkworks argued we got a benefit. In many instances, Parkworks isn't even identified in the legislation, but I'm not minimizing it, Judge, he accepts responsibility for what he did. In every instance, Judge, the votes that he cast did not make a difference, they were unanimous. In many instances, he was just voting on legislation to authorize the expenditure for public, for public parter and the such. But again, counts 11 through 26 deal with the time period between 2006 and 2012, when Nora, his wife, his then-wife, they got married in 2006, was in a position at Land Studio, and many of these 16 contracts benefited Land Studio. Again, Judge, not to minimize what's happening, but to give some perspective, we figured that in the 18 years that Joe was a councilman, he cast a vote over 100,000 times for different pieces of legislation, just to give this some perspective. Neither he nor Nora profited personally of any of these votes. And then in October 13, we now know approximately one month after the complaint was filed with the Ohio Elections Commission, Joe was in an editorial endorsement review with the plane dealer, and his opponent shared with the editorial board the complaint that had been filed with the Ohio Elections Commission. And this was the first time that Joe had any idea that any of the votes that he may have cast over the last years may be subject to a question of conflict of interest. And after that point in time, anything that was arguably within a conflict of interest, he started recusing himself from that vote. But from October of 2013, when he first learned about this, to today, this investigation has taken a tremendous toll on Joe and his family because it's been very public, there have been several editorials written about it, letters to the air and the such, and every time everything started to quiet down, there would be yet another editorial or another newspaper article questioning the investigation. So it's something that they've been living with for a long time, these past four and a half years. In 2016, Joe interviewed for a job at what is now his employer, Global Cleveland. He was completely honest with them, he told them about the investigation, he told them about where it might go, and nevertheless, they hired him, and they value him very much today, as you can see in the letter that's been provided to you from Global Cleveland's board, Judge. So it's fortunate for Joe and it's fortunate for Global Cleveland, but they're going to continue to stand behind him as he moves forward from today, Judge. But today, Joe stands before you, Judge, with full knowledge that he should have been more diligent in his approach to legislation, that he should have seen or recognized that the votes that he was casting may in some way formulate a conflict of interest, and he blames no one but himself today, Judge. The investigation has been humbling to Joe, it's taken its toll, in some respects, it's really knocked him off his feet, but he's strong and we know he'll move on. Judge, we set forth in our sentencing on a random of principles and factors that the court needs to take into consideration, we're sentencing someone on misdemeanors, and we respectfully submit that after you've analyzed those, and I don't have to tell you how to analyze those, you know better than we do, Judge, that you will see that, we hope to come with the conclusion that a sense of community control sanctions in this is the appropriate sense, Your Honor. We would ask you to consider his life of honesty and sacrifice and service in balancing it against the counts that he's pleading guilty to today, Judge. We would ask you that you temper, you temper any punishment as compared to his life works, Judge, and we would respectfully ask you, Judge, that you impose a sentence of community control sanctions. He will never repeat this kind of conduct, Judge, he doesn't have the opportunity, he's paid dearly already in many ways, and we would respectfully ask you to take all of that into consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Simperman, is there any comment or remarks you'd like to make about sentencing?
Yes, Your Honor. First, Your Honor, I would like to apologize to you, to this court, to the community, to my family and my friends for the actions that have led me here, the actions that are mine and mine alone. Your Honor, not a day goes by in five years where I haven't woken up to this or thought about it. And Your Honor, if I could do anything to go back and do it right, I would, to recuse myself, Your Honor, to do what is right and to not be in violation of the law. Your Honor, I'm very embarrassed and ashamed because this isn't who I wanted to be when I first ran for office. For 18 years, Your Honor, I tried hard to serve the community that I love, that raised me, and there are very few moments, Your Honor, when I look back and think to myself that my mom and dad have been gone for 20 years and I'm happy that they're not here today to see this, Your Honor, I'm very ashamed. Your Honor, I hope to be able to go forward, this isn't who I am, this is what I did, and I take full responsibility for it. And Your Honor, I am hopeful that for the time that I have left to be able to serve this community that I love, Your Honor, and to in some way continue to take care of the people who for so long took care of me. Your Honor, I am extremely grateful for the people who are here today, for my employer and for my friends who are here, for the people who wrote letters. Your Honor, this is a cautionary tale, and one that I replay over and over in my head and hope, Your Honor, you understand how sorry I am and how I wish that I would have thought differently when I was first in office, and, Your Honor, I humbly apologize to you today.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, on behalf of the State?
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, as this court is well aware, Cleveland has a long, instored past of corruption, and the defendant that comes before you today is another example of what happens when public officials lose. Mr. Simperman is charged with profiting or receiving an interest in the public contracts that were awarded to Land Studio and Parkworks. First, when he was a trustee, as a fiduciary for the organization, he received a benefit through his employment on the board through Parkworks, and then through his marriage to Ms. Romanoff in 2006. Now, Mr. Simperman through counsel says that he didn't receive a benefit, and while that is true, Joe Simperman is not alleged to have received any form of tangible benefit in the term of kickbacks or extra money of any sort, but Nora Romanoff arguably did receive benefits of all of these public contracts. From the time that Ms. Romanoff started in Parkworks in 2006, her compensation was $53,181.52, and her salary from 2006 to 2016 rose by 135 percent, arguably, and from the words of her employer, Ann Zoller, because of the body of her work, and the body of her work included these public contracts. So, beginning at the $53,000 range, she in 2016 was making $125,000 as a result of the body of her work. Now, it's undisputed that what Mr. Simperman did benefited the city of Cleveland. You can see it as you walk through Public Square and see the work of Parkworks and the Red Line Art Installations there, contracts that in 2014 and 2015, after he was made known of this investigation, he did vote on. However, you cannot be a public official and not consider the interests of those that you've served. Those that he served included other businesses who would arguably have liked the opportunity to put in bits for the monumental work that's been done in the city of Cleveland. Kirk Plaza is another example, as I mentioned before, the Group Plan Commission through Public Square, Market Square is one that Parkworks untouched as well. And so, his constituents include the other citizens in the city of Cleveland who want an opportunity of fair play, who want an opportunity to explore their business potential as well. But when the game is already laid out, when the result is already predetermined, and when city council goes in with a completely unanimous vote on 26 separate occasions awarding the contracts to the very company that Mr. Simperman's wife works for, that's certainly not fair play, and it's a deterrent for innovation in the city of Cleveland. That is why we need to send a message that corruption in public service is simply unacceptable, that your elected representatives represent you, the constituents. And so, as a result, Your Honor, I would ask you to impose a sentence that doesn't demean the seriousness of this offense, and send a message that the people of the city of Cleveland will not tolerate corruption in any form, and I would ask that you sentence Mr. Simperman to a residential section. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sennberg, any comments?
I would take exception to a lot of what the State has said, started with the fact that we have a storied past in Cleveland, Judge, but I will tell you this, we decided not to litigate this case, so I'm not going to get in the weeds on this, Judge, but one of the major factors that the State failed to realize in their investigation, and I only bring this up because Ms. Anderson, Mrs. Anderson has, is that Nora Romanoff's pay in large part increased significantly because she went from a part-time to a full-time position, which they never seemed to understand. So there was an explanation for her, plus she's an extraordinarily valued employee, and anyone who's ever worked with her would tell you that, and we take great exception to any criticism of Nora, because you can look at her body of work, when you look at Public Square, when you look at Kirk Plaza, when you go throughout the city and many, many different areas, so we do take exception to that, Judge. But we do accept responsibility here, we're not here to minimize the seriousness of the crimes, Judge, and Joe accepts it, and he's willing to move on, and we ask, Your Honor, we've taken into consideration again Joe's body of work of 47 years and recognize that these are not your common corruption cases, Judge. The corruption that we're all well too aware of that took place in this county was direct benefits went to each one of those 63 defendants, they all could show dollars to them, and in this case, there's no dollars to Joe and there's no dollars to this guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simperman, in sentencing you and all others who come before the court on misdemeanors, required to comply with the misdemeanor sentencing statutes, particularly 29, 29.21, the overriding purpose is to protect the public from future crime by the offender and others, and to punish the offender, and there are a number of considerations. Under 29, 29.22, the nature and circumstance of the offense, whether you're likely to commit future crimes, so those are some of the things that the court has before it in imposing sentence in this matter. One of the things I do consider and find significant, there is a violation of public trust, but that being said, this is not the type of public corruption that has recently been experienced in this county, it is not even the same breadth or scope, and there's a reason that you have misdemeanors as opposed to those that are serving more severe penalties. In terms of indicators that you might be in a court for any offense, there really are none. The type of charge that we have involving your voting on matters, in retrospect, I'm sure that you wish you had accused yourself way back in 2002 and recognized that there is the appearance of impropriety or a possible conflict, and as Ms. Anderson said, there is still feeling from some that there was an actual benefit through your wife to you. But I'm dealing with the charges that we have, you have expressed your remorse for them and your understanding that if nothing else, it gave the appearance to the public that there was a benefit, and that is not something that you had expected through your otherwise exemplary public service, it's not the impression you gave, and it's certainly not the service you gave to the community. And I know it is a humbling and embarrassing experience for anybody to be here. We had three sentencings this morning, and I'm sure that those individuals felt no more comfortable here than you do, so anytime someone is in court on a criminal matter is excruciating to them, and they frequently, I hear that this is not who I am and I'm not a bad- frequently, I hear that this is not who I am and I'm not a bad person. And I think in this, certainly in your instance, that is very accurate. You're educated, you have strong community support, you do a lot of volunteer work, you've contributed through your efforts in the community to more vibrant Cleveland and Cuyahoga County. So, there have been significant positive contributions that I feel outweigh the negatives here for these particular charges. So, I see this as a long history of outstanding civic service and a regrettable lapse in judgment. So, in this matter, given the fact that you have provided more benefits to the community than anything you might have received personally or even through your wife, as expressed by the State, court is imposing a sentence in this matter on count one, six months, that would be consecutive to counts two through 26, those would be concurrent, but that 12 months in county jail is suspended. You'll be on 12 months probation with Group A, according to our departmental guideline, you will be reporting once every six months. You're in the low-risk supervision group. And court is imposing a fine of $10,000. That's $1,000 on each of counts one through 10, so it's $10,000 total, plus court costs and a supervision fee. And I will ask that you, and require that you perform 100 hours of court community work service. That shouldn't be difficult, given that you've already volunteered thousands of hours with the community in the past. So, but you understand the effect that this has on the public trust and certainly the appearance of unlawfulness, and I'm certain that you're willing to accept these terms and emerge from this with a better understanding of yourself and respect for the community. So, anything else on behalf of the State?
Your Honor, just one thing that I did forget at the time of the plea, we did re-execute a new waiver indictment. If the court would find that discharging this previous waiver of the indictment, all it needs is your signature.
That's all. You see that, Judge?
And beyond that, no, thank you. Nothing on behalf of the State.
Sennberg, anything else on behalf of your client?
Oh, Your Honor, thank you very much.
Okay, can you get him down to seven?
We will.
Good luck.
Thank you, Your Honor.